Good evening. This is Athens City Council, Monday, November 3rd, 2025. We're at 7:01 PM. Tonight is a regular session of Athens City Council where we will read, discuss, and in some cases, vote on ordinances. But first, we have a public hearing, the title of which is "Amend Athens City Zoning Code to Permit Temporary Housing Shelters as a Conditionally Permitted Use in R3 and B3 Zones." Before I open up the public hearing part, I'd like to tell the audience some of the ground rules. Those who would like to speak from the audience on this issue will have three minutes, three minutes only. There will be no rebuttals to anything that is said before. I do not want the audience to break out into spontaneous cheering or booing on any point. This is a public hearing. It's not a football game. So with that admonishment, I will open up the public hearing. So there is a sheet, I believe, that's being passed around. Being a public hearing, we're required that everybody in the audience has to sign it. Sorry, David, but that's the way the rules work. It may not be right, but it is the law. So make sure you sign. And when you come up to speak, please give us your name and whether or not you represent a group or you're just speaking on your own. I think I've covered all the major points to that. So who would like to be first to speak on this issue? Come forward.
I hate public speaking. That's why I wanted to do it first. My name is Jeff Lyons. I live in Athens. Before I moved to Athens, I was a contractor and a builder for 35 years in Chicago. It was my pleasure to be the person who built the temporary housing that's at the gathering place right now. So I just wanted to take a moment to just give you a little, you know, information about the actual construction of the house. And then from my perspective of being around the gathering spot, gathering place for the time that I was working there, I am not speaking on their behalf. I want to be very clear about this. It's outsiders', you know, view of what goes on there. So first of all, I just, I do think it's worth mentioning that these are not like shabby shacks or anything like that. These are well-constructed, I'll speak for the one I built. They're very well-constructed, very well-designed structures and will give people some real security and protection from the weather. And I think that the fact that they are well-built and well-designed helps people feel that pride of place and will act accordingly. You know, my impression of the gathering place was that the people there have tremendous hearts, but they're not, they don't suffer fools. They're going to, they, they, they expect, again, my impression, I think they expect that the people that they are providing services for will hold up their ends of the, of what's necessary to be good community members and good neighbors. My impression was that they're very serious, very dedicated, and when people aren't, the people who are availing themselves of their services aren't acting properly, they're called out on it. They're not pushovers. Last thing, and I don't say this with any glibness at all, and I really respect and the concerns that, you know, people express for their safety, the college students. The unfortunate fact is statistically speaking, they are, they face far more threats from their peers than from anyone who would be availing themselves of these services. So I thank you, and if it's appropriate, I'll leave my contact information if anyone would like. I'm retired. This is not soliciting. If anyone would like, feel like they'd like more information about how the, these things are constructed, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Aiden Fox. I'm a senior here at Ohio University. I live and work within the residence halls. I'm just going to get into the meat of my concerns here tonight. This is not something that I talk about or reveal lightly, but I am a formerly homeless person myself. In fact, I have experienced it several times throughout my life. As a child, I lived in several domestic violence and homeless shelters, and I have very close friends who don't or didn't know about, know this about me before now. While I sincerely applaud the council's attempt to aid the homeless population within the city of Athens, it is a serious issue in our community, I think the supporters of this rezoning proposal are letting their good intentions blind them to the basic realities of this situation. There is a reason shelters are rarely built right next to schools or heavy residential areas. I can tell you, none of the ones that I personally resided in were. Being homeless is an aggravating factor in both being a perpetrator and also a victim of crime. When I was homeless, no one stole from me more, threatened me more, or victimized me more than other homeless people. Even if I decide to concede that these will all be genuinely people, just genuinely searching for help and on some kind of recovery plan here with gathering place, this rezoning would place them right next to Court Street, which would inevitably make any sort of recovery system or recovery process, especially from alcohol, exponentially more difficult. It would also place them in the middle of a residential environment that is very hostile to the idea of them just being there. I live people who, all right, sorry, I know people who live on that street and in that area, and I can tell you that they are scared and adamantly opposed to this proposal. And being one of the people that they were formerly being one of the people that they are concerned about, I don't blame them for a single second. I fear the consequences that the fear, anger, and/or resentments from the wider residential area could result in. It's not difficult to imagine either the homeless people themselves or these shelters becoming victims of crime. I firmly believe that the homeless population in Athens, the city of Athens and the wider county, I believe that they deserve help. I deserve that, I believe that they deserve help. Security, excuse me, like I said, this is not something that's easy for me to talk about. They deserve help and hope, and while this proposal is well-intentioned, I believe that it is conducive to neither. I strongly encourage the council to seek other locations for these potential huts. I strongly encourage them to seek other possible solutions, and I encourage community members to be as charitable and to aid these individuals best they can on an individual level as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I'm Kelly.
And we live next to the gathering place. We were at the last city council meeting with a ton of our roommates and our friends that live behind us, and it's only Kelly and I tonight because some of the girls felt disrespected by other people that were speaking, so tonight it's just us two. We just wanted to represent our house and reemphasize as the people living directly next to the huts that we are not in support of them. So we just want to start by saying that we respect the efforts to help people who are struggling, but opposing this plan doesn't mean we also don't care. It means we care about safety, fairness, and about doing this the right way. These huts don't meet housing codes. They're basically small sheds. Supportive housing works when it's very secure, supervised, and built to standards that keep everyone safe. This plan doesn't do that. Council meetings should be about listening and real discussion and not shaming people who disagree. This is our home. We have every right to question what happens right next door. There are also serious safety concerns that have not been addressed. Even supporters admit crime rates are higher among unhoused populations. And while supportive housing can help, these huts are not true supportive housing. They're temporary unsupervised structures placed behind a tall fence that already violates city code. Hiding them behind a screen doesn't make them safer. It makes neighbors feel more uneasy. I'm asking council, as the neighbors directly next to the huts, to take our concerns seriously. We all want a community that helps people in need, but that shouldn't come at the cost of making others feel unsafe. Please find a solution that's both compassionate and responsible. Thank you.
For those people who are just coming in, if you could find a chair, and if you can't find a chair, could you please stand along the back wall and stay away from the exit?
My name is Daniel West. I live in Athens. I am in support of the Conestoga Hut placement in the Gathering Place parking lot. While like some other people, I really don't like being in front of people like this. I feel this is important. And by the way, I want to thank the Athens community for all the support we've heard so far. So I am a staff member at the GP. I've been working there for almost 19 years now. Every year, especially in the last decade, we've seen the need growing and growing, not just mental health support, but basic needs for survival. I want to emphasize that these people we're talking about being helped are our neighbors and community members, and this project will help address those needs. Our goal was never to put GP in a spotlight, in a position almost having to defend what we do in general, but we're talking about zoning for three small structures in our own parking lot. Not a lot of people know that this uptown area idea was not our first proposal. We've actually been denied other placement options. So what I'm trying to say is it's not a political stunt. This is kind of what we're left with at this point, and we will make it work smoothly. The Timothy House Shelter has been mentioned a few times before, and it truly is an essential resource. While sometimes there are openings, a lot of times it's full. People don't get in right away, and it simply doesn't work for everybody all the time. I want to point out that I'm also a peer recovery supporter, which means I have lived with mental illness myself, and if it makes anybody feel any better, I'm just about one of the safest people you'd ever meet. I say that because I feel I can represent a group of people that are not being thought about by some. People in deep recovery are not more dangerous than any random neighbor, whether they have a past with addiction or not. My struggles, for example, make life more difficult for me, not anybody around me. For the huts, as council has explained before, it's not going to start a trend of other huts just appearing around town. They'll have the power of approval. But in this situation, we can show it can be done in a dire situation like this. I've noticed it's already gotten down to at least 38 degrees outside. A lot of, a lot of people in this country say mental health is a big problem, so here's something right in front of us that we can do locally that will have a real impact on people's lives. Without a basic shelter, people's recovery is being held back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, before we continue, could I have a point of order, please?
Yes.
The agenda item before us tonight is amend Athens City Code to permit temporary housing shelters as conditionally permitted use in R3 and B3 zones. I respect all the opinions of all the speakers so far this evening, but we are not talking about this at the gathering place. That was the previous public hearing. However, for those who do want to speak to the gathering place, that issue will be at second reading later in tonight's meeting, and that would be the appropriate place to address the gathering place.
Good point. Well taken. Nonetheless, this is an issue that is before the public, and I think a lot of people want to get their say in.
Well, as I said, it's listed on the agenda and advertised in the newspaper for 30 days that this is in R3 and B3 zones, and we've previously had the hearing specifically on the gathering place. And again, I'll reiterate, we are at second reading tonight on that other one where people will have an opportunity to speak. I guess maybe I could look to the law director for her opinion on the agenda and the item before us this evening.
I would agree that the hearing tonight is R3-B3, and that's what people should be speaking to, but those who want to talk about the gathering place will have an opportunity later on during the meeting, during second reading.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council want to chime in on this? Very well, then. Your points are well taken, and that from the law director. So we will then confine it to R3-B and B3 zoning. Would anyone care to speak to that? Mr. Stauffer?
Now that it seems very apparent that 2504 is going to pass, I would hope you would folks would decide to drop table, do away with, and attempt to bust our town wide open to allow homeless encampments on our many streets, many of which directly face R1 neighborhoods that are the most restrictive and where families seek comfort and peace of mind. In this instance, I would see this peace of mind as an implied property right, especially in R1. Mr. Swank put up a zoning map at the last meeting. Many streets in this town face B3 and R3. Besides peace of mind in R1, we must consider the loss of property values in these areas as few prospective buyers would want to face that in their possible future new home. Also, of course, the effect to a neighboring business, to a homeless encampment in another business that has tents, huts, and a portage on that are allowed as a campsite could possibly and would probably discourage people to visit the neighboring business. I spoke to Reisner, Crowe, Swank, McCary. I missed Ms. Solve's return phone call, which was my fault. Ms. Thomas asked to record my call when I called her. I said, okay. I didn't know her intent. Intimidation? To limit my words? To distort them somehow? To take them out of context? I don't know, but it never happened to me before. I guess maybe that's what one-party rule gets in this community. Folks, please save our town from being viewed as a sanctuary city by the homeless. Don't encourage more unfortunate souls. Vote to leave our neighborhood's safe and comfortable feeling to our residents. The folks that elected you probably don't know of this issue as they are busy home, living their lives. Few are here. Many are affected by your decision. It's up to you. Look out for the many. Include the unfortunates, but provide them real shelter or let them move on. Real shelter has a roof, walls, and heat.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address the issue of R3 and B3?
Hi. Hello again. Kent Lankas, 34, West Washington. I'm speaking as just a private citizen and taxpayer in the city. I think looking at the language of this particular ordinance, it's important to note the caveats of having access to services, to mental health services. That's a very, very important distinction. I don't see anywhere any sort of listing as like tent cities or anything like that. You know, these are our structures. This seems to be left up to, you know, individual property owners and organizations that provide these services to help fill a very dire need. And I think it's also important to note the extra series of checks and balances that are written in this particular amendment as far as the city service safety director having to okay everything, as well as the board of zoning appeals. And I want to note that it is on public record in the past in the committee hearings about this very ordinance before it was brought to full council. All of those concerns have been addressed, so, you know, I think it's, it's a good idea that could possibly address a potential future need if it arises, and we all need to focus on that fact, that that is not some sort of a blanket, as this is written, it's not a blanket thing of saying like, okay, this is going to happen everywhere. The checks and balances are there. The services necessary for any individuals that would be served by these sorts of proposals is there. So I think it would behoove all of us to just focus on things as they're written and not, you know, not spread any more fear or any more misinformation. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Along three here. Well, if there's no further comments from the public, then I will close the public hearing, and we will proceed on to our regular session of city council. For those of you who wish to leave, announce the opportunity. If not, just sit still. First thing to do is to establish a quorum. I see that six members are present, one absent. Disposition of minutes, the regular session of city council held October 20, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes. Any discussion? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The proposal has accepted, been accepted. Member Swank?
I received one today about 6 o'clock, which I had to check out on the way over here. As many of you are aware, we have done a remodeling, a reconfiguration of the intersection of Madison Avenue and East State Street, right next to where the old Athens Flower Shop used to be. And the communication I received from the resident is it has changed drastically, and you need to drive with caution. As you are headed uptown from, say, Bob Evans on East State Street, the curve now juts out a little bit, and as it gets dark earlier, if you're not careful, you end up like a car I saw today with a busted wheel and a busted rim. So drive safely anyway, but pay particular attention, those of you who've lived in this town as long as I have, since 1983, the road pattern has changed dramatically.
Are there council members? Any communications? Very well, then we will go on to reports and communications from other elected officials, beginning with the law director.
Yeah.
Attorney Mayor Crowe?
Yes, thank you. I want to acknowledge receipt of many communications regarding the public hearing tonight and the subject of the R3 and B3 conditional use. I won't go and name all of the, of the names or read anything from those communications, but I do appreciate community members reaching out and sharing their, their input on that issue. I also want to just remark on a, on a little bit of a different communication I received today about Athens Food Rescue. It is their 10th anniversary, and this is a nonprofit organization that has collected over 33,000 pounds of food this year. In general, since 2015, they estimate they have collected about 372,000 pounds of milk, bread, produce, and other provisions, and they, these are contributions that, that put a lot of food on, on tables, as well as keeping it out of the waste stream, keeping it out of the landfill. So we're very happy with the work of Athens Food Rescue and learning that they've been able to hire a new executive director and be able to expand their operations. So I just wanted to congratulate Athens Food Rescue for the great work that they do. And that's all that I had. Service Safety Director, thank you.
Got another one.
Remember Swank?
I'm sorry, I forgot about this one. We received a communication from the Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control concerning the notice of a liquor permit transfer from Boozy Bubbles LLC, that's 18 South Court Street, to JSF Wine and Spirits LLC, 14 Station Street. That is Uncorked, the facility at Uncorked. It's whether or not we need a hearing on this, it appears to be a simple legal liquor, legal liquor transfer from one place in Athens to another, from Court Street down to the Station Street project area.
Thank you. If there was any objection, how, when would an objection have to be filed?
We need to file this by the, ooh. All I see is February. This is mail 10/28. Oh, responses must be poked, poked, marked by 11/28.
All right. Thank you. I believe that takes care of communications. In which case, we'll move on to ordinance for a third reading. When we read an ordinance for the third time, it will then be acted upon, voted on, or tabled, or some action from council. The first one we have on our agenda is ordinance 100-25, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into a pre-annexation agreement with the Athens County Commissioners introduced by council member Swank.
This is short and sweet. We've read it two times. This is the third. The property in question is the following. The service safety director is hereby authorized to enter into a pre-annexation agreement with the Athens County Commissioners for property generally described as a nine-acre and 20 or more acres adjacent and contiguous site located 18 Stony Brook Drive, Athens, Ohio, a copy of which is attached herein to as Exhibit A incorporated herein by reference. This is the children's services property over on East State Street. It's tucked in between East State Street, Utah, and Route 33. And, Mr. President, I would move that council approve 100-25.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Discussion, members of council? Administration? Members of the audience? Very well. We've had a motion and a second. I will call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting ordinance 100-25 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Ordinance has passed. Ordinance 101-25, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contracts for the construction of a new water line along Jacob Street from Graham to Stony Brook, Project Number 386, introduced by council member Thomas.
Thank you. This goes along with the pre-annexation for the children's services new building that's coming. This is going to allow them to access city water and connect when the building's done. It's also going to allow us to improve water flow in that area. This is just going to allow us to open up bids to get that work started and done for the new water line, and that's pretty much all of it. I move that we adopt ordinance 101-25.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Administration? Service Safety Director, Stun?
Thanks. Thank you, Member Reisner. We had some discussions today with the city engineering director, Poc Works, and specifically with the designer, and it appears as though the, the design estimate is a little higher than we expected it to be. the, the design estimate is a little higher than we expected it to be. So, um, I would like to ask you to consider this evening an amendment to this, um, to adjust from 380, 380,000 appropriation and authorization to 420,000 appropriation authorization. I'm, I'm hopeful that it will come in below that, but what I don't want to do is have to come back to you, um, after bids come in and seek more money. So, um, if you would consider, um, making an amendment this evening, that would be, that would be helpful. Um, I, I don't know that it needs to pass tonight, so I, you know, I'm not seeking, um, you know, return to first reading or suspension of the rules, but if you would, uh, at least, um, get that amendment started so that we can, um, advertise it appropriately, um, from the, with the design estimate. And then, like I said, I'll, I'll seek, uh, I'll seek passage perhaps at a future meeting.
Well, as a matter of procedure, since there's already a motion before council that's been seconded.
It could be withdrawn, and I would see a motion to, um, amend it, would, uh, take precedence over the motion to adopt. So either way, it would be okay.
Is there a motion to withdrawal?
Uh, I'll move.
Second.
Do we have to vote on that?
No.
I didn't think so. Um, very well then, uh, would someone like to, um, make a motion to?
Amend.
Adopt the?
Amend.
The, to amend the, as suggested by the Service Safety Director.
So moved.
Seconded.
Discussion?
Uh, I am assuming we're amending both sections two and three. Okay.
Further discussion? Anything to add, administration? Audience? Very well, we have a motion and a second to make an amendment, uh, to this ordinance. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. We will move on to ordinance 103-25, an ordinance establishing Title 29 Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.37, Unoccupied and Vacant Property Registration, introduced by Councilmember Swank.
Uh, the best way to describe this would be to read the purpose of this ordinance. The purpose of this chapter is to establish a program for identifying and registering unoccupied and vacant residential, commercial, and industrial buildings and structures, to determine responsibilities of owners of vacant buildings and structures, and to speed, and to speed the rehabilitation of vacant properties and buildings for productive use. Mr. President, I would move that council pass 103-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt. Any discussion? Administration, anything to say about this? Members of the audience? Very well then, uh, since we've had a motion and a second, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting ordinance 103-25 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, has been passed. Ordinance 104-25, an ordinance amended, amending Title 29 Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.37, introduced by, definitions and introduced by Councilmember Swank.
Uh, as often the case, when ordinances are changed or introduced for the first time, there is a section on definitions. I'm not going to read all these, but I will read the titles. The definitions we're talking about are designated local contact, evidence of vacancy, unoccupied, vacant building, and all of those are defined so that this can be enforced by the appropriate authorities within the city, particularly the code office. Uh, Mr. President, I would move that council pass 104-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion concerning definitions? Administration? Audience members? Very well. Call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting ordinance 104-25 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. It has been adopted. Ordinance 105-25, an ord- ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 1, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established, to include Sections 29.37.06, introduced by Councilmember Swank.
Uh, this is the third piece of legislation related to the vacant structure ordinances. And what it does is establishes the fees for registration for both residential and commercial and industrial properties. Uh, Mr. President, I would move that council pass ordinance 105-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adopting. Any discussion, council? Members of the administration? Audience? Very well, call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting 105-25 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, it's been passed. Ordinance 106-25, an ordinance establishing a do not knock registration program through the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, introduced by Councilmember Swank.
Uh, it's, uh, ironic that each of us got a NOPEC, I think. Maybe I just got it. I'm the only one. NOPEC is our, uh, gas aggregation company. It's out of, uh, Northern Ohio. Um, Athens is the furthest, uh, south in terms of members, and I am on the board of NOPEC. In fact, coming up, uh, on the 17th and 18th of November will be our annual general assembly. One of the services that NOPEC provides for member cities without cost is a no-knock registration program where you, as a resident, can place your property on that registration file and get a little sticker that you can put on the window, which basically means that commercial solicitors shall not knock on your door. Uh, one of the things that people often complain about is the, uh, energy salespeople who offer a deal that seems too good to be true, and three, six, or nine months turns out to be too good to be true. That's one of the things that, uh, hopefully this will address. But, uh, organizations, uh, will be able to obtain this list from our code office, hopefully online. And if your property is listed on it, uh, there should be no knocking on the door. Trick or treaters are exempt. Uh, Girl Scout cookies are exempt, but this applies to commercial entities. Uh, Mr. President, I would move that council pass, uh, ordinance 106-25.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Discussion? Member Wood?
Just to add on to what Alan said, um, we've also got the, uh, website. If you want to join that program, it's blockthenock.com.
Thank you.
For those listening, you know.
Members of the administration? Audience? A call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting 106-25 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, it's passed. Ordinance 107-25, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 11 Business Regulations, Chapter 11.04 Vending, Peddling, and Soliciting, Sections 11.04.17, Trespassing of Peddlers or Solicitors, introduced by Councilmember Swank.
Where the previous ordinance established the no-knock program, this ordinance, um, deals with trespassing of peddlers or solicitors and codifies it. And I'll read the one sentence. No peddler or solicitor shall attempt to peddle or solicit upon any property that has a public display, sign, or warning prohibiting peddling or soliciting on the property, or is registered with the city's do not knock program in accordance with ordinance 106-25. Mr. President, I would move the council pass 107-25.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Administration? Audience? Very well, call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting 107-25 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, it's been passed. Ordinance 110-25, an ordinance establishing a cybersecurity policy for the city of Athens, introduced by all council members. Who would care to speak to this? Attorney McCary?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Pro Tim Reisner. Uh, ordinance 110-25 is, uh, standard now in Ohio where municipalities are required to adopt a security policy, cybersecurity specifically. Uh, this has been discussed and is now being read for the third time. So I'd like to move that council adopt ordinance 110-25.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Any discussion, council? Administration, anything to say about this?
The one note I would say is that, that this is a state law now. The local government has to have a policy, um, and we're following that state law, number one. Number two, um, over time, this may evolve, and we may update this policy, and I'll come back to you to adjust it as, as needed. But we think it's pretty comprehensive at this point, and, and, and hits the key points that we need to. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the audience? Very well, call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting ordinance 110-25 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, it's been adopted. Moving on to ordinance for second reading, the usual procedure is that we will read the title of the ordinance. And if there is, uh, no discussion or anything from the sponsor, we move on to the next ordinance to be read. If there is discussion, then we stop and discuss it. Ordinance 112-25, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 23 Zoning, Chapter 23.04 Permitted Uses, to allow temporary shelters as a permitted use in an R3 residential zone at 1, 5, and 7 North Congress Street, introduced by Councilmember Swank. Member Swank? Anything to discuss?
No, sir.
Members, I know. Uh, members of, uh, council, because I know this is controversial, members of the audience, is there anyone out there who would care to speak to this ordinance, either for or against?
Hi, my name is Megan Benjamin. Um, I live in Athens currently, and I'm a social work student and intern at The Gathering Place. I'm here tonight to speak about the members of The Gathering Place and to challenge the assumptions surrounding the word felon. Many people here today think felons are inherently dangerous, or that they have made choices that are easily recognizable as, as criminal. However, the truth is that anyone can become a felon. Often, the circumstances are far more complicated than a news headline or a criminal record suggests. In social work, we are taught that often circumstances are the deciding factor in whether someone becomes a felon, not character. One of the stories that shaped my learning was about a man named Antonio from Cincinnati, Ohio. He was a father of four, working full-time while his wife worked part-time, and battled severe illness. When Antonio lost a contract and fell behind on bills during winter, their electricity was shut off. Desperate to keep his family warm, he tried to restore power himself, was severely burned, and then once he survived, was charged with felony utility fraud. Antonio wasn't a criminal. He was a father, a husband, a man who loved his family, and would do anything to keep them warm and protect them. He was a, he became a felon overnight. Although Antonio became a felon, it doesn't automatically strip him of his dignity, potential, or worth. He was a good man, and is still a good man. This story reminded me that learning, teaching, and advocating for disadvantaged groups is my education, my mission, and will soon be my full-time job. This isn't just my opinion or feelings that make me support the Conestoga Hut project and its location. It is the foundation of social work, almost four years of education, and my firsthand experience with the members who would be staying in the Conestoga Huts. This is an educated decision. When someone has no shelter in the winter or access to food, they are faced with an impossible choice: freeze or starve, or break the law simply to survive. In moments of desperation, people do what they must to stay alive. If this feels hard to understand, it may be because you've been fortunate enough to not worry about your next meal or where you will sleep at night. If we judge people only by their record, we ignore systemic inequalities, poverty, and the desperation that leads to crime. The Gathering Place are neighbors, fathers, mothers, students, and friends. Being a felon is a legal label. It is not always an immoral judgment. It is not always a prediction of violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Maddie Shiplett. I'm a citizen of the city of Athens at 24 Home Street. I'm also an employee at The Gathering Place at 7 North Congress. I started at The Gathering Place as an intern last May. I graduated from Ohio University in August last year, and I was blessed with a full-time position upon my graduation. Many of those in opposition to this project may be interested to hear that I am also a young woman. I turned 23 last week. I have been uncomfortable with people exploiting the real fear young women feel for their safety in this community to, I feel, scare people against this project. I did not own a car until around April this year, and most of the time I walked to and from work until I did, including in the winter when it was dark for a couple hours before my shift ended around seven o'clock. I can say with certainty that no one took more concern for my safety than the unhoused people that I worked with every day, because no one in this community is more at risk of violence than they are. When I walked home, much further than most students do, as I live on the east side, I did not fear the individuals that I worked with. I was called out by young men drinking on the porches of their rental houses, though, and over a year at The Gathering Place, I can say I have never once felt unsafe there. I want to remind everyone here as gently as I can that while I understand and share your fear for your safety at night, we must remember the safety of those who do not have shelter. Many of those we serve have experienced a lack of shelter, who have been harassed, assaulted, had their things stolen while living in tents or under bridges or overpasses, not generally by others without shelter, but by Athens residents who are sheltered and OU students. The most vulnerable people we serve do not have a home with a lockable door to walk home to at night. Nearly every day, as I lock my own door, I think of those I work with who can only dream of that security at this moment. Over this winter, I lost sleep every night. You guys know it was pretty bitter. Um, I read about a woman in Parkersburg who froze to death, and I was devastated, and I knew there was nothing I could do. Then we established the Emergency Warming Center, which I'm very grateful to the city and cooperating with. I worked there, uh, in the wee hours of the morning, um, from 1:00 AM to 9:00 AM. I never feared for my safety or the safety of those sleeping there. I was relieved that there was something I could do. This past winter, I looked a homeless mother in the eyes, and I told her there was nothing we could do, and she would have to sleep in her car tonight. I helped a woman living on the street wash and put gloves on her hands because they were so stiff and frostnip, she couldn't feel them anymore. I walked past a young man sleeping on a bench right outside of this city building in the bitter cold, and I didn't avert my eyes and try to ignore him because I knew him and I cared for him. These are only the stories of three people The Gathering Place has served, and they've left a mark on my heart. But some of those opposed say that a safe, warm place to sleep at night should not be bothered with because it would only serve three people. It would not be a Band-Aid solution to them. It would be a critical point of access to safety and services. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Do I, do I need to say my address?
Yes, you do.
Okay. I'm Emerson Young. I live out on South Green, 105 South Green. I'm a student here at this university. I have several concerns with this project. Um, I do. I watched this public hearing a few weeks ago and watched somebody say they felt offended, that the law enforcement should feel offended that there's people feeling unsafe about this. And I thought that made my blood boil. I walked down Congress.
Sir, keep your voice down.
Sorry. I get a, I have autism. I get a little, uh, excited. So I'm not trying to sound mean or nasty. I want to make that perfectly clear. I have autism myself, and I know the kid who had mental illness, it is hard sometimes. Um, I have some concerns with this project. I don't want my frie-, I have friends who text me that they're scared every night, that if this thing comes, they feel that a, uh, they're going to get hurt. They work at the local bars here in Athens. They're already terrified to go up there as well. I have friends that all, my friends and I go up, have, have a friend up there that live all the time. I feel a little uneasy going back to my dorm from time to time. I, uh, I think, I think we need to look at a different location. I'm not against, uh, homeless shelters. I'm a meteorologist. I'm a meteorologist in training. And I think an idea that I would have for these people is maybe instead of the Congress, uh, Congress Street area, uh, look at the Richland Avenue near the McDonald's off 33 there. There's not a part, I don't know if that, how that's zoned, but, uh, I would look at maybe that location. It's away from the university, the port, the, uh, where the students live are pretty high up in the air. Um, and I think they'll be better. Uh, another issue too, that I think people really don't talk about in that neighborhood with Congress Street, is there's a lot of parties in that neighborhood. A lot of drunk people, she just mentioned about. She just mentioned about Manhattan calling her, and I feel bad that that happened to her, and I'm not like that. But I, I just think this location just needs to be addressed and all of that. I want to thank you for your time, and I would like to apologize for raising my voice. I get a little excited. I have autism myself, so my apologies to the city council. And good luck tomorrow, the election for the people running tomorrow.
Thank you. Next speaker? If you can get to the podium.
Andy Vogt, 9142, 5 points road. However, I also own property within the city of Athens. Last week, I watched the conference on TV, and there was a couple comments. First, I'd like to make a couple comments, and then I'm going to offer kind of a solution to what that gentleman just came up with. There was a couple comments after Council, Councilman Thomas had spoke about our group that speaks in opposition. There was, Mr. Wood, you said something, "Well, I guess those people don't look, like looking at homeless people." And it really kind of got me thinking, and it made me think, "Maybe you don't understand our position on this." Our position is, a lot of us who are in this group have deep ties to this community. We understand one thing, that the rising tide of enrollment lifts every vessel in this community. And I mean, that is from business, and not only this city, the county, and even the region. I mean, thank God for Ohio University. We went through a time period when Mr. or Dr. Nellis was our president, and our enrollment plummeted. And it was, it was a great hardship for a lot of us. And none of us have spoken ill of The Gathering Place. Many of us have commended them for their 50 years of service. Another comment was, you know, we, we stand up against the low-income housing projects. I realize I'm a little off-topic, but I'll, I promise you I'll circle it back around. You know, a lot of us in our group, we understand we have three employment opportunities in this town. We have the government, which can be township, city, county, state. We also, and we could throw in education in that, but we also have a higher university, and then three different medical communities. And thank God we have those two. Outside of that, when these out-of-town operations come in and want to build the low-income housing, it leads me to believe, one, there'd be somewhat of a vacuum. And where is the pathway of prosperity for these people? There isn't a lot of jobs in this community. I would say many of you sitting up there right now have had children that have moved on. I'm going to get to my solution. My solution is, why don't we take a look at the space underneath the fire department, the abandoned fire department on Columbus Road? One, that gives you shelter for the shelter. There are big trees looming over the property on Congress and West Washington Street. Two, it would be, as somebody who's gone through recovery, I wouldn't want to be within the close proximity of the uptown area, even during the summer when the doorstep's going on. You know, secondly, now there's also the worry about would they have access to emergency personnel? There's a call box on that building that could be rewired and could be lit up. And the last thing, how would this help the city of Athens? Well, this would take a lot of this zoning that Aaron Thomas spoke to last week off the table, where it wouldn't be a problem. And I spoke to a landlord in that general area who said he would be okay with that location. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker? Yes? There's no one ahead of you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Webb, 5 Canterbury Drive, Athens, Ohio. I want to say that I am born and raised in Athens County. I currently work for Ohio University as the undergraduate director of field education for the Department of Social Work. I want to be very clear to say that I'm not representing Ohio University right now. I'm just giving you my experience and my personal take. I am expressing my support for the project and for Ginger and all of the staff. I want to let you all know that the Department of Social Work has a 30-year history of partnering with The Gathering Place. We have interns there every year. I've been working with OU for the last 13 years. I've never had a concern about safety for a student that we've had placed there. I also want to let you know that in the last five years, the Department of Social Work's enrollment has grown significantly. This last year, in 2024, we had our, what we thought was going to be our highest rate of graduating seniors, and actually, we've surpassed it this year. We're going to have almost 60 BSW seniors graduating. Again, not representing Ohio University, just giving you my experience. I have no concerns as someone who cares about Athens County, Athens City, and the safety of our students about this project, and I encourage you to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jack Stoffer, 69 Elmwood. I feel like I'm talking to the wall, but I'm hoping somebody's going to listen. This is not about The Gathering Place, Ginger, me, or the folks I said I was speaking for previously. Tonight, I'm speaking my words and my thoughts and my concerns about how to maintain and save our current quality of life and feelings of comfort in our little town of Athens. Everyone knows Athens is a caring, inclusive, welcoming community. We do not need to damage our image by starting a homeless encampment in our downtown area. Research says The Gathering Place was pushing for temporary housing on Union Street behind Job and Family Services just last year. Now, the one and only site being considered is on Congress Street. I and others have made suggestions, and of course, there are many other possible sites. If these folks are vetted, as you propose, and insist, them safe, why not open a room, provide sleeping bags, and let them sleep in the house or even the basement where it's warm at The Gathering Place? We remove them from city property, but decide Congress Street for tents and huts is more appropriate. This makes no sense. The only conclusion one could reach, if you use common sense, is this, this, you want to make a statement, a political statement, a political stunt. I call bullshit. Focus on Athens, Athens County, and let the others wander elsewhere. What's next? A big sign at the edge of town that says Sanctuary City? Meanwhile, the mayor's at a world summit addressing climate change, trying to save the planet while our hometown is headed to hell. I told him earlier today, "I thought we hired you to look out for Athens, not the planet. Consider the locals, OU students, children, and our visitors. If we screw this up and lose enrollment at OU, everybody loses. Remember, desperate people have desperate ways. Please use some common sense when making this decision." Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tara Griffiths. I'm a long-term resident of the west side. I just want to bring this conversation back to scale. We're talking about three temporary structures to house the most vulnerable people in our community. We're not talking about tent cities. We're not talking about homeless encampments. The community of Athens is an inclusive, welcoming place for all people, not just white people, not just straight people, not just affluent people, for all people. The conversation to move unhoused people underground is offensive and egregious. We are past the time where we move people that we don't want in our society underground or in a closet. The idea that that would be proposed and listened to should be offensive to everyone in this room. The statement that homeless encampments or tent cities is what this project is about is a gross exaggeration. It is fear-mongering, and I want it on the record that that's not what this project is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi there. Eric Johnston, I live at 300 Highland. I'm a licensed social worker and work in the community, live here, I grew up in Nelsonville. Just want to share with you my story about why I came back and why I stay here. Having a degree in licensed social work, it's a pretty portable license. I could get a job work pretty much anywhere. One of the industries that is fortunate to almost always be hiring is healthcare. But I choose to stay here, and I chose to come back here, to this area, because I believe in hope, and there is a sense of community here that I think not only draws people to Athens, but keeps people here. And I think as a council, you have an opportunity, even with just these three huts, to say and to make an established statement that we are a community that cares, and that we see the people who are less fortunate than others, and we care for them, and we wrap our arms around them. I think that invites people to want to stay, right? People often want to leave a community where they don't feel welcomed. And that goes not just for unhoused folks, right? But even people like myself, who serve those people. If I work in a community or live in a community that I feel isn't going to support the work that I'm doing, why would I stay? I love Athens. I love this area, I love Athens County. I feel like there's so much potential here, and I implore you to hear my support, hear the support of the other people in the room, and support the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alicia Castro, and I live on Pomeroy Road. I am also a social worker. I'm representing myself as a community member. I have lived in Athens for 20 years. I came here as a student. I'm one of those people that came here, got a bunch of degrees, and never left. I never left for a reason, because I love Athens. It is my home. I raise children here, and I do have a child who will eventually be attending school uptown. As a former social worker in the community, I saw firsthand the immense need for our community to have safe, affordable, and emergency housing. In order to make progress in life, a person must have their absolute basic needs met: food, shelter, water, some of those things. This project has the ability to allow people to seek and sustain employment in making strides towards sustainability. It's so crucial for people who are in crisis or unstable situations to have access to support, and they can find that here in our community at The Gathering Place, as well as basic resources like transportation and other things that our community has to offer. Unfortunately, in my opinion, I think it's ridiculous to say that it is not a safe space for college students or for our young community members. This shows the concept that we want to help people, but not if it's close to us. I lived right next door to the Timothy House for several years. I was a college student. They were, they were my next-door neighbors. I never had any issues. In fact, it was a very uneventful experience. In fact, they actually gifted me fresh produce when I moved into that house. We need our unhoused community members part of our community and not hidden away. We should not treat unhoused people as criminals or people unworthy of the same safe, dry living spaces that we would all want. I want to remind people that being unhoused does not equal being a criminal. Being unhoused does not equal dealing with substance misuse. Unhoused people are people, and unfortunately, I fear that some of you are missing that. I believe The Gathering Place has a thorough plan, and I feel this project is a great step towards bridging the gap for our unhoused Athenians. I'm really proud of the work they're doing, and their interns that are also involved. And I hope this location is officially chosen, and I appreciate all the work that they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, my name is Susan McNish, and I live at 5550 Gun Club Road. And I happen to be the partner with Jeff Lyons, who actually built the Conestoga Hut. And I just want to ask anybody if they've ever Googled "impact on Conestoga Hut on an unhoused person." You can, you know, we're talking about these structures, and we're talking about the potentiality of people living in them, but we moved here about five years ago during COVID. And I don't know how Jeff got involved in making this Conestoga Hut. Honestly, I had never heard of a Conestoga Hut, and it was COVID. And I'm like, "What are you talking about, making a Conestoga Hut?" And so, I Googled "impact on Conestoga Hut" of, at that time, they were called homeless people. And I was just overwhelmed by the voices and the experiences that were shared by a few people that had the good fortune of having temporary housing of this hut. Now, if we talk about the importance of productive citizenship, you know, that's a buzzword. Really, that means people paying taxes and being a part of a society that we would like to have. This is an opportunity for these people to have the possibility of that in their life. And three homes, temporary homes, could make such a difference for a person that is fortunate enough to be given the care and the support and the advocacy and the encouragement of this community. That's why I moved here, from Chicago. And when you really talk about unhoused people and the impact of that in a much larger spectrum, we, we know what that is. And I, and I don't want Athens to be anywhere like that. And I just want to comment, I know this is, by the way, Athens is a part of the global world, so when we talk about what's good for Athens, it actually is good for the global community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Hi. Kent Lake is 34, West Washington. I'm the senior resident at Mike's Bridge House, which is the recovery house attached to The Gathering Place and the parking lot for this pilot program. I actually prepared in advance, but I feel the need to address just what I'm hearing. You know, I, I was born here. Also, hi, Sarah, it's good to see you. You know, I, I've been a resident, I've been a student, I've been a homeowner, been a taxpayer. I've been displaced. The word homeless always really, really hurt me, so I would tell people I was addressless. You know, I tried to get my address put down, it's underneath Richland Avenue, but that did not work out well. Go figure. And, you know, the stigma was really difficult for me to bear. From, coming from what I consider as a productive person with a lot of potential, you know, I was a valedictorian. My family did a lot for this community. I did a lot for this community, and it's still happened to me, you know? Mental illness, it's, it's not something to be stigmatized. And that one thing of having shelter, of having security, that made the entire world of difference, you know? I am a taxpayer now. It seems like, you know, a lot of the people who are opposed to this, and it's been mentioned on public records, the outspoken opponents are, you know, say stuff like, "I'm a fall guy for a group of concerned citizens," and you know, when it boils down to it, ah, you know, the person who owns the house next to this project has announced he's suing the city over this project. And it's, he also tried to buy The Gathering Place. He tried to buy my recovery house. He tried to buy the parking lot, presumably to put up more student-centered housing in close proximity to, you know, bars that some of the landlords own. And people bring up the aesthetics of the city, and I can say personally that three coast, safe, cozy, secure micro-shelters is nothing to the piles of vomit and urine and trash all over the city every morning, if we want to bring aesthetics into it. But one thing I do want to mention is that a person in recovery from whatever, they become a better person than they were before their issues began. And that is something that we need to, you know, allow all of, all of us. And that is something that we need to, you know, allow all of us. We need to have that opportunity, you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Lorraine McCosker at Elmwood Place. I first would like to say I really would like to-
Can I interrupt you just for a second?
Oh, yeah.
Don't touch the microphone.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
Continue.
I'd like to thank the people who have spoken tonight. I think we've heard a lot of heartfelt thoughts and also ideas. I love the idea of using the old fire station as a warming shelter like last year. I hope that this city will do that again. I hope the city puts this on the top of their agenda with many of our needs. So I would like to just remind people that in 1963, President Johnson announced the War on Poverty at the Memorial Auditorium. And that program was to alleviate poverty through programs as Medicaid, Medicare, Social Security, not Social Security, and Head Start, all programs that are under threat right now with our administration. Appalachia had a total of about 33% poverty. Athens is an Appalachian county, one of 32 in Ohio. From that came the Appalachian Regional Commission and that is a program that is to help Appalachian counties. They, every year, they look at poverty rates. For the past 10 years, Athens has been at the highest poverty rate distressed, at one of the 10 worst counties, 10% in the whole country. That decreased last year from distressed to at risk. But still, we have about 25% poverty. Athens County is 25% poverty, the highest in the entire state. And the city of Athens is 41% poverty. So I want to like you to put that in context. We have a growing population of people at risk. We have people without services. We have people without access to housing. I know many, many people who cannot access housing in the city or even in the county. They're moving other places. So I think that this all has to be taken into account when we're addressing the Conestoga Huts and the work of the gathering place. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Gabe Spiezio. I live just outside Athens city limits. Super nervous, but my kid's making me come up here and speak my mind, so we're gonna do it. I'm here representing myself and all the other members of our community who often find themselves standing on the outside looking in when it comes to issues within the city of Athens. My family and I moved here two and a half years ago when we fell in love with the geography. We used to live out west. We learned quickly the vast majority of people here are wholesome, accepting, honest, helpful humans. And we feel blessed beyond measure to have made friends with our neighbors and community members from every strife. However, there is a common and troubling theme that I feel is bubbling beneath the surface that makes me uncomfortable. As evidenced by many issues over the past two years and highlighted most recently by comments surrounding this issue, I've noticed an undercurrent of belittlement, moral superiority and rejection of differing viewpoints. Many in our community, including some of you before us, pride yourselves on doing the right thing, valuing one another's worth and recognizing the rights of others to live with safety, dignity and compassion. This extends to people from virtually all walks of life, except it seems those who bravely stand up against the group think that is so prevalent in our close-knit community. Two weeks ago, I watched and I had trouble believing what I was hearing as members of our caring community chose to trivialize and disparage the courageous university students who spoke about their anxiety over the proposed huts. Instead of addressing their concerns, some community members and even some of you in this council chose to mock and dismiss them, which is why I'm here tonight. I found that deeply disappointing and frankly beneath the Athens that I have come to admire. The pattern continued when nearby homeowners voiced concerns and were labeled as "un-Athens-like." That kind of thinking where disagreement is treated as moral failure does not reflect the community we claim to be. Then, last week, a council member openly admitted their mind was already made up with this issue. That statement spoke volumes about why many of us feel unheard in this community. I'm here because I care about Athens. I value the voices of every person. I love this process. That's why I have my 13-year-old son here with us. I value everything that you guys bring to the table. Whether they are unhoused individuals, students, landlords, elected officials, whether or not I agree with them, I implore everyone here to look beneath the surface, set your egos aside and truly consider what it means to walk in someone else's shoes. Athens prides itself on compassion, inclusion and empathy. Let's make sure that extends not just to those that agree with us, but to everyone who calls this place home. So I'm very specifically not saying how I feel about the proposed Conestoga Huts. I was just very disappointed from both our community members and some of the members on our council last week. I know tempers have been flaring, but I feel like we can do better at allowing different viewpoints to feel safe because that's what we're talking about here, is everybody feeling safe. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to ordinance 113-25. An ordinance rezoning portions of North Lancaster Street, Second Street, Columbia Avenue and Columbus Road from Zones R1 and B2D to Zones R2, B1 and B2. Introduced by Councilmember Swank.
No, sir.
Ordinance 114-25, an ordinance amending the 2025 appropriation ordinance 115-24, introduced by Councilmember McCary. Anything? Yes?
Thank you, Member Reisner. I do have one addition to this particular ordinance. This is just a couple additional appropriations in 270 and 271. As it's an appropriation ordinance that's going through, I also have a transfer that needs to go through that I'd like to ask you to amend. And specifically, I'm seeking the transfer of all of the money that currently is sitting in the 750637 transaction class 500 lines to the transaction class 300 lines. And that specific dollar amount is $27,082.38. This is already appropriated money. This is money that would be transferred from the TC 500 lines to the TC 300 lines, which takes council action to do that. And if you could just amend that to add it to this particular ordinance, that would be very helpful. We had an unfortunate accident last week with one of our dump trucks in the wastewater treatment plant and that caused some additional expenses associated with wrapping up the year. And so this will be a way that we can get through without having to do a new appropriation, just transferring these funds. Thank you.
Is there any problem with this going back to first reading?
No.
Member Swank?
I would so move that we amend 114-25 per the language that Director Stone just shared with us because that's too many numbers.
Thank you. I did share this with the clerk earlier today.
Okay. So I'm so moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to make an amendment as described by the City Service Safety Director and Member Swank. All those in favor of this amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. It's been approved. The ordinance is now back to a first reading. Ordinance 115-25, an ordinance declaring property located at 25 Central Avenue no longer needed for a municipal purpose and authorizing the mayor to sell said property to another political subdivision, introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, Pro Tim Reisner. I'll just ask the Service Safety Director if we have any updates regarding this particular ordinance? Okay.
Very well. Ordinance 116-25, an ordinance declaring property located at 458 Richland Avenue no longer needed for a municipal purpose and authorizing the mayor to sell said property to another political subdivision, introduced by Councilmember McCary. Ordinance 117-25, an ordinance authorizing the disposal of equipment no longer needed for a municipal purpose, introduced by Councilmember Thomas. That concludes our second readings. Moving on to ordinances for first reading. An ordinance, oh, see, ordinance 118-25, an ordinance authorizing disposal of the city's front-end loader no longer needed for a municipal purpose as trade-in towards the purchase of a replacement bucket loader truck for the street department and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, Pro Tim Reisner. Just to give some more information, since this has been discussed in committee, the Engineering and Public Works Department has located a 2022 bucket loader truck formerly belonging to ODOT with only 350 hours of use. And whereas the current front-end loader was purchased new in 1997 with over 7,500 hours of use and it is at the end of its useful life, therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, the Athens City Council hereby declares the following vehicle no longer needed for municipal purpose. And Section 3 reads that the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to purchase a used bucket loader truck and to expend up to $150,000 for said truck from Street Fund 220. Those are the pertinent details. And I would like to move that we suspend the rules in order to adopt ordinance 118-25 so that we can secure this vehicle on the timeline that our administration has requested.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules and a second. Any discussion about the suspension? Member Swank?
You mentioned timeline. Was there also a cost advantage by moving on this quickly?
Not particularly, but, you know, this is a tool that we use primarily for snow and ice control. So, you know, the sooner that we can make this activity happen and get passed, the sooner we'll be in a good shape for the winter.
Any further discussion? Members of the audience? We have a motion to suspend the rules. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The rules are suspended. Member McCary?
Thank you, President Pro Tim Reisner. I'd like to move that we adopt ordinance 118-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt. Any discussion? Members of the administration, audience? Bring it up for a vote. All those in favor of adopting ordinance 118-25 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Eyes have it. The ordinance has been adopted and we get a front-end loader.
All right.
Ordinance 119-25, an ordinance amending the 25 appropriation ordinance 115-24, introduced by Councilmember Reisner, which is me. Okay. Section 1, the 2025 appropriation ordinance 115-24 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriate balance the following sums: $60,000 to General Fund Parking Enforcement 101.718, transaction code 300; additional funds for IPS credit card fees for the parking meters; $6,000 to Recreation Fund 270, transaction code 300, for charge point EV charging stations; $30,000 to Water Fund 740, transaction code 200, for maintenance materials; $30,000 to Sewer Fund 750, transaction code 200, for maintenance materials, increase in total appropriations by said amount. Section 2, the 2025 appropriation ordinance 115-24 is further amended by decreasing Street Fund 220, transaction code 500, capital improvements by $30,000 and increase in the transaction code 200 supplies by the same amount and decreasing and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. The ordinance has been read for the first time. Member Swank?
$60,000 to General Fund, additional funding for IPS credit card fees. I would assume when someone uses a credit card on a parking meter, like any other retail establishment, there's a fee of X to X. What do we pay on a percentage basis for that? What's our fee?
Thank you, Member Swank, for the question. And this was an ad for this particular appropriations ordinance since last week when we talked about this. And specifically, it's a pass-through. I'd have to give the specific number. So this is actually kind of a good news story, right? So all of this money has been remitted as part of a pass-through cost with parking meters. And then subsequently, we have to pay back.
Okay.
As part of a, I wouldn't say it's in the 35 cent range for transaction, but I don't believe in that. I'll give the specific number for the amount for transaction.
So if I, one more question. Show of hands, Ohio University students, how many of you use the parking meters uptown? How many of you use cash? Okay, it's credit cards primarily. So when you say 35 cents per transaction, if somebody puts in four quarters, figuratively speaking, four quarters, a dollar's worth, we pay 35 cents on that?
No, you only pay for the benefit of using a credit card.
Okay.
So if you want to carry coins in your glove compartment or in your ashtray, like I do in my car, you don't have to pay-
Forgive me, this takes a little while because everything's been computerized and it makes it so much easier than having a piece of paper in front of you. Oh, it's a PDF file. Okay. I'll just read the highlights because it's a spreadsheet that's about a mile long. Section 1, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, State of Ohio, that to provide for the current expenditure of Sid's city of Athens during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2026, the following sums be and they are hereby set aside and appropriated as follows, which is in Section 2, which goes on for several sheets. So take my word for it, it's all on your drive. If anyone wants some late night reading, I suggest they take a look at it. So let's move on to... Yes, Member Swank?
Several questions, like many. The figures that we have before us today are quite different than the ones we saw last week. And I'm sure there are explanations for all these, but I think it would be appropriate that we get those. Let's start with the General Fund. Police figures we have this week are 20% more than last week. Fire this week, 23% more and lands and buildings, 24% more. Are those three increases due to overtime now being calculated in the appropriated amount?
Yes.
So the one that concerns me the most is fire. It went up 23%. It went up from, if I have the figures correct here, from 3.7 million to 4.5 million, which is $800,000. In the figures that I got from the auditor a month or two ago when we were looking at overtime costs, when we were discussing the possibility of Ohio University helping us with funding on our fire department, overtime figures have been coming down to where we're getting down to around an average of $300,000 a year. Why the $500,000 difference?
Sure. Thank you, Member Swank. So if you look at the difference between this number and the number of last year's budget, they're relatively flat. It's just compared to last week because we didn't have the overtime numbers in there at all last week and that was just a function of us, you know, not being entirely prepared with our attempt to meet your timeline. And we hadn't calculated overtime yet. You know, overtime is down this year. Also, the other thing that we've done over the last year is we have decreased the number of baseline firefighters. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we had that FEMA grant that allowed us to basically have an additional three firefighters on the books for two years and we basically attrited those with retire- on the books for two years, and we, we basically attrited those with retirements. And so, we're back down to 15 as far as baseline firefighters and then six lieutenants. That FEMA grant allowed us to go up to 18. And so, if you, if you look at it, you know, we basically used that, that period of time to, to turn over our staff and, and to get new folks in here. You know, our overtime costs have been less this past year because we've been successful in doing that, but compared to last year, we're, we're about flat with our, with our budget, and, and we're pretty proud of that. That said, compared to last week, what I gave you was, was all of the TC 100 lines for both fire and police, but I hadn't put any of the overtime costs in there yet. You know, we were still working with the auditor's office to get, you know, an estimate of what that would be.
And as I mentioned, I'm sure that was a good explanation, but those are rather large figures to, to certainly see. And to your last point there, when you compare this year's appropriation, requested appropriation, meaning 2026, for the general fund, that's an increase of 1.2%, which is fairly flat.
Right. We're trying to, to, you know, do the best that we can to keep those costs in the general fund specifically because we know the tax revenue has not been as robust as we'd like it to be.
So, just a couple others. Streets, supplies and services from last week, 677,000 jumped to 940,000 this week. The item 220.
Yep, I'm looking at it. You said 677?
677, 400 last and 940, 400 this week.
Yeah, I'll have to get back to you on that one. The number that I have in the, in the agenda item is the 677 that you put forward. I don't know if you had a, a different document.
Well, this is the one that, that we were issued last week, and this is the one that Clerk Walker sent us this afternoon.
Okay.
Staying on streets, when we get over to Fund 572, we went from 1.4 million to 1.8 million week to week, and the biggest change seems to be in debt service. Went from 250,000 to 600,000.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I can speak to, to that specifically. We recalculated the amount of debt that we have to pay, and, and we took on quite a bit of transportation debt with both Simpson Avenue and Union Street. And Union Street would be the one now that we have that additional service. You know, when we were going into 2025, last year, we had to pay debt service on Simpson Avenue, and now we did a significant improvement to West Union Street, and we've got debt service on that as well. So, right now, the 572 fund and that additional street rehab levy, in part, is helping serve, serve that debt for both of those things. I don't like to carry transportation debt. I really don't. It's not something that, that is particularly good. You know, water and sewer debt you can manage and you need to manage because, you know, that's the way that you do capital improvements. We like to try to do transportation capital improvements by, you know, external funding, you know, whether it be state or federal funding leveraged with a local match that we, that we gather through that, that street rehab fund. But both the Simpson Avenue project and the Union Street project functionally, you know, grew significantly in cost from the time we got that external funding to the time that we delivered the project. And, you know, there were a lot of demands on both of those projects as far as what the public wanted, and ultimately, you know, the, the costs associated with those with the, with the inflationary pressures during the pandemic, with both of those projects, you know, landed in conditions where we, where we ended up borrowing through the state infrastructure bank on both of those, and so now we're servicing debt on both of those.
Okay.
My hope is to pay that off as quickly as possible, but, but ultimately, that's the difference is debt is now coming due on that West Union Street project.
Perfect. And the last one is under Water Fund. Last week, we had Supplies and Services, 36,000. This year, this week, it's jumped to 353,000. Line 740636, Water Fund Administration.
Yeah, the document that I have in front of me is the one that was issued with the agenda on Friday. Yeah, so you, you caught me, you know, in front of everybody here. I wish you would ask, you know, prior to this, so.
Well, I just got it late this afternoon myself.
I don't know. My, my guess is that's the general fund admin support. So, both water and sewer, both of those proprietary funds have a certain amount of money that go in the general fund admin support that gets assigned to the 740636 portion, and then specifically in transaction class 300. So, my guess is that's specifically what, what is going on there. That got updated here from last week to this week. But, you know, I'll do my best to, to sort that out and get you an answer prior to the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good. So, a lot of this was just updating as you got more information over the course of this week, is what I'm hearing?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion on the topic? Audience? We'll move on to ordinance 121-25, an ordinance authorizing 2026 staffing levels, repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency, be it ordained by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio, section one, effective the first paid period in 2026, authorized staffing levels attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference shall be in effect, and all ordinance inconsistent therewith shall be repealed. And then we have section two, section three, which is more verbiage on that. So, we do this every year at this time. Any questions on this? Service Safety Director?
Sure. Okay. All right. Thank you, Member Reisner. So, there is one note related to the court, and specifically, this is in the 23, I think it is in the 232 fund. Specifically, there's a, there, right now is, is one, or it might be the 235. Is it 235? Which one was it? Sorry about that.
Does this have to do with the email that was sent out this afternoon?
235? Yep, that's it. 235 fund. Right now, they're showing one FTE in the 235 fund. One of the problems with showing that, even though right now that position is not filled and the court doesn't have plans to fill that position until such time that a grant would, would come in, which ultimately that position becomes, is grant funded frequently, is that if we go and put one on the books for that, then the auditor's office is compelled to fund the, the medical fund associated with their, their contribution or that particular FTE's contribution to the medical fund. So, what I'm proposing is to reduce that and keep it on the books as, as a, as a position, but reduce it to zero and at such time that that becomes grant funded, that we come back to you and amend the, the personnel or correction of staffing ordinance in order to, to put that one back on there. And that would, that would alleviate ultimately the auditor's office of having to, to pull and, and make the fund go into a negative balance because, like, you know, they can't make it go into a negative balance. So, that would be the, the thought. But what we don't want to do is, is get rid of it entirely and scratch it off, and then you say, you know, hey, what do you mean you're adding a position? So, you know, the, the, the idea would be that we reduce it to zero, and then once it gets grant funded, we'll, we'll increase it back to, to one.
Very well. Further discussion to council? Members of the audience? Okay. And we'll move on to... Ordinance 122-25, an ordinance authorizing the 2026 non-union compensation, repealing all ordinance inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency, and declaring an emergency introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. And I will bring it up. An ordinance authorizing the 2026 non-union compensation, be it ordained by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio, section one, pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 731.08, power legislative authority as to salaries and bonds in the city of Athens' non-union fringe benefits. City Council does hereby authorize a 2% general hourly pay increase for all, for full-time and permanent part-time non-union employees. Non-union employees in a probationary status shall not be eligible for any general hourly pay increase. Section two, the city council does hereby authorize a one-time lump sum payment of 2% to those employees whose general hourly pay rate exceeds or will exceed the maximum pay rate and their pay grade, a copy of which is attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference. Said general hourly pay increase or lump sum payment shall be effective on the first paid period of 2026. Any discussion on this? Administration?
Florida Social Security for this year. Trying to be responsible. Thank you.
Members of the audience? Member Swank? Okay. Move on to 123. I'm not going to read all of this. It's fairly long. Section one, the city service director is hereby authorized to enter into contract with the Employees Benefit Service Center to serve as third-party administrator, TPA, to the city's health insurance program for the period from January 1, 2026 to December 31st, 2026. To include Exhibit A, planned listing administrative service fee schedule attached here too and incorporated herein by reference, said contract shall contain at a minimum the following controls, which are all available for anyone who cares to read the entire ordinance and contract. Any discussion? Again, this is one of these things that we do every year at this time. Seems to be the season that brings it out. Let's drop down to 2023. An ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract with the Employee Benefit Service Center.
I just did that.
I just did that. Sorry about that. Yes. That is 123. Yes, you're right. Sorry about that. I really do prefer paper. You know, it's been around for a thousand years, and it'll be here long after we're gone. 124-25, an ordinance authorizing a group access loss medical insurance contract and declaring an emergency, wherein the current contract expires on December 31st, 2025, be it ordained by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio, section one, effective January 1, 2026, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to enter into a one-year contract ending December 31st, 2026, with Sirius America to cover the city's stop-loss access loss medical insurance. A copy of the application policy schedule for group access loss medical insurance is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference. Discussion? Administration, anything to add to this? Very well. Been read for the first time. Next one should be 25. Ordinance 125-25, an ordinance authorizing the payment of prior year expenses and declaring an emergency. Section one, the auditor is hereby authorized to expend up to $6,000 from Recreation Fund 270, transaction code 300, to pay a prior year expense to Charge Point for EV charging stations. Any questions on this? Do we need a suspension of the rules?
It's asking for it to be emergency.
Well, let's see.
Is this the bill that mysteriously appeared?
Yes.
Yeah, forget suspension.
Where is it saying I need a suspension? He's not asking for it, but I'm, I'm hearing.
Section two refers to an emergency.
Well, it's an emergency, but it's not, that's not a suspension of the rules.
This is the then-announced certificate that the auditor usually requests.
Okay, let's, let's have a decision here. Administration, do you want it suspended or not?
The auditor often likes to keep payments that are past due, whether it's the city's fault or the vendor's fault to be paid rapidly. We don't have their participation this evening, but I believe the auditor would like this to be suspended.
Okay, do we have a motion to suspend?
I move.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion on the suspension and the reasons why? It seemed pretty clear. All is in favor of suspending the rules. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay?
Nope.
We have one nay, and, but the majority says yes.
We don't have enough people. You only have five votes.
You're right. Nothing we can do. It's been read for the first time. Okay. And one more, 126. It's short and sweet. An ordinance approving a then-announced certificate for payment and declaring an emergency, an ordinance authorizing a then-announced certificate for a payment to Charge Point in the amount of $6,000. I don't think we're going to suspend the rules on this, so it's been read for the first time. A member would?
This reads exactly the same as the previous items. Is there a reason we're doing it twice?
I didn't write the agenda.
Aye, I can, I can speak to that. Thank you. So, the first one is a, is a, an authorization, specifically, and, and the second one is a, is a then-announced certificate. So, a then-announced certificate is necessary when you don't have an encumbrance to, to, in place against an invoice that is received. And so, as this was a surprise bill, as we, we discussed last week, we didn't expect to get this. You know, the auditor's office says you've got to have a then-announced certificate from an accounting provision because we didn't have an encumbrance.
Does it make sense?
So, it's backing up the same, the same bill with a second piece of paper?
Yep, pretty much, pretty much. It's an accounting, an accounting thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's specific to that encumbrance rule, the fact that you didn't encumber the money beforehand.
Member Crow?
Thank you, President Pro Tim Reisner. I'll just note that this is also a pass-through. This is for the EV charging stations at the city pool where we've already received the money we receive monthly, but we then pay a portion of that money that has been received to, for the maintenance or the, the, basically management of these EV stations and their payments. So, this is something we pay every year, but as, as, as Member Swank has noted, the company did not send the bill for 2024. We've already paid 2025 because they sent the bill. They just didn't send it in 2024.
Let me ask this question. Are we absolutely, positively, absolutely certain that it is indeed the company that we're supposed to be paying the bill to, and we absolutely do owe the money? There's no question about that.
Thank you for the question, Member Reisner. I will make sure prior to sending the money to this because that's a, that, that, that's been, that's, that's a valid question that we've been asking, you know, to confirm. This company's changed hands a couple of different times over the last couple of years, and so, you know, when you get a random bill out of nowhere from someplace, you question it. And so, you know, understanding we're trying to, to get money in place in order to do it prior to the end of 2025, we want to do that, but like before we actually send the check, we're validating that.
Any further discussion on this? I think that concludes all the ordinances for first reading. We move on to announcements and other business. Appointment to the Athens Community Relations Commission.
Thank you, President Pro Tim Reisner. I am council liaison to the Community Relations Commission, and the commission has voted in favor of having a new member, Igioma. and the commission has voted in favor of having a new member, Igioma Idika Chima. And she is a PhD student at Ohio University and has an impressive background. I'm just going to mention a few traits, that we have a Masters of Social Work relevant to the commission's mission and a graduate certificate in development practice, as well as one in global health and women, gender and sexuality studies, and has work experience with our Buonaventure School of Leadership and Public Service. So a lot of great traits that Igioma is bringing to the commission. And I'd like to move that we support and accept the commission's recommended appointment of Igioma to the Athens Community Relations Commission.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second to accept this appointment. Is there any discussion among council? I don't see any. Members of the administration? Members of the audience? Very well, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the appointment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the appointment has been approved. Next is Opportunities for Citizens. Okay.
I have an announcement.
Oh, you have an announcement?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is a notice of another public hearing. Athens City Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, November 17th, 2025, in council chambers on the third floor of the city building. This public hearing is to consider a recommendation from the Planning Commission, case number 25-06, proposing zone changes for properties along North Lancaster Street, Second Street, Columbia Avenue, and Columbus Road. Full text to the recommendation and the map of the rezoning area is available contacting dwalker@ci athens oh h dot U S. This was published in a paper of general circulation on Saturday, October 11th. We have to wait 30 days after that point, which means next Monday, seven, no, two Mondays for now, 17th will be the first business meeting 30 days after the publishing of said notice.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Going once, twice? Okay. Opportunities for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. This is your last chance to speak. Very well. I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned at 8:54 PM.